Yeah, my vice chair is absent too.
No chair or vice chair?
My chair is absent. I don't see Jennifer.
She didn't respond to the text or anything, so she might be late. I mean, she works in with her, so...
What do you do? What do you do with...
So you appoint somebody just temporarily to act as the presiding officer until one of the presiding officers, you know, shows up.
Well, Jonathan, I got a thing for you.
I got your jumper.
I'm supposed to be here.
Do we have a few minutes then?
Let's give it a five.
After that, I'll take it over.
After that, you can appoint somebody, or, you know, I move that so I'm so, you know... Yeah, I don't have to see you got a presiding officer now.
Just for your pardon, does anyone need a pardon?
Alright, let's bring this meeting, this call to the district to order.
My pleasure, my pleasure. You actually have an agenda, madam chair, you have a little bit of business to do before me. It's right in front of you.
Alright.
We, we talk about, we, board members of long-range facility meetings.
Yeah, I was gonna just recommend that, it's a very lengthy process we're doing. We'll be going through, it will probably even go into the next year. We'll be doing some more intensive work here in the next few months, and then we'll be doing, except for being 10, 12 months probably. It would be helpful to have, in the same way that we were appointing like a couple of board members to participate in negotiations, it would be good, I think, to appoint maybe two more members to be delegates for longer facilities. Not that anybody couldn't show up, but any of you, but you just have a couple identified who could be committed to being in a majority of the meetings. And they're gonna be, you know, like once a month or so in the weeks.
And could you, just for the record, explain the definition of what the two board members would be doing in that meeting?
Sure.
Just as our public knows, and we're all on the same page.
It'll be, it'll be important for our board members to be there to represent and to hear the conversations going on. I will actually advise our participating board members to not get too far into the weeds, if you will, so that they're not actually driving some of the conversation, but they're making sure that I am running a good process that gives voice to many people and has organized, cohesive timeline and a schedule and a series of actions that we're intending to lead us to a recommendation on our facilities. But again, yeah, I will caution board members against getting into driving a particular conversation because the people in the room will often defer then to just that authority figure who's in the room. But what we really wanna do is encourage all diverse voices in a lengthy process.
Yes. Thank you for making that explanation and getting it on record in public, so, appreciate it.
So do you want to express interest?
I would like to express interest in being a part of that committee. I could commit to that once or twice a month, I've never made anything, and I could commit for, well, at least two years. I don't know, it could get longer than that, but we'll have to see. Hopefully it'll be longer, but, you know, you never know. So, but as long as you need me, I can actually make that commitment.
I can, I can do it to, somebody else goes on the line.
I'd like to.
Where?
Yeah. Are you on the committee yet?
You know, I'm on the, I'm on the management team, so I'll defer. I'll probably, I'll be coming to, or, yeah, I'll be coming to other meetings, but I will come, but Paul, you go for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm very indecisive of all things, so I'll probably... This is your first time?
Yeah, I'll be number one, I'll be number one, okay. In the general, okay, no doubt.
And so it's not a problem how there are four?
Every meeting will be, since we say board committee, it will, every meeting will be publicly noticed, and when I say notice, we put a thing on our website that says, hey, long-range facilities, this meeting, this location is the only time. And what else should we be doing as far as...
Probably their events, so, really realistic.
And our minutes will be...
You're gonna be there.
Since, you know, larger facilities has done a process where we're making decisions after decisions after decisions, there's not a lot of minutes to take other than who showed up, generally speaking, what were the topics that were people discussing. So it'll be sort of that long of minutes.
Right.
At some point, there will be decisions and recommendations that the committee are going to forward on to the school board, but that's, like I said, months and months down.
So no action will be taken off to be noticed?
No.
All just be...
Any other discussion?
I just have one more thing that I wanted to make clear, or to help clarify. If, if there are board members who, if all the board members are invited to the meetings, and they show up at the board meetings, or at the committees, excuse me, we need to make sure that the public and everyone understands that we're showing up as either, as board members, and we're listening, or, because we're all parents too.
Yep.
So how do we make sure that we are, I have my board hat on, or I have my parent hat on, but we have, I mean, really we do, because we wanna make sure that no one has any questions about, oh, why is, you know, why are all these board members coming? But we wanna make sure that everybody feels comfortable, everybody knows their role.
I wasn't there when I kicked out the meeting. I will explain to everybody in the room, kind of what I just said a minute ago about the role of board members, in fact, that's kind of on top of my agenda, I don't want to get roughed out for most days.
Great. And so if we're attending as non-board members, we observe?
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
And I do expect you to have some observers, especially in the first couple of meetings.
Yeah.
After a while, people will see that, oh, there's a group of people going through a lengthy process together, they will check in via their friends, often, I suspect.
Thanks for the clear communication, that'll help start us off on the right direction.
So do you want to speak to the chair now?
Sorry about that. Yes, I'd be fine, and it sounds like we had three voluntary to come, you deferred, it sounded like people attend as you're able to...
I get, I'm commenting.
Yeah, no, I get that too. So, I certainly am fine with the two of you going, I don't think that's something that the board has to vote on, I think chair can appoint, so if there's no other discussion about it, I'm fine with appointing the two of you.
Okay.
That's fine, I mean.
Okay. Thank you. So where to be now?
Yeah. Which... So, yes, that was really the, to be is the crux of what we're gonna do today at this work session, we're very to talk about the training and work that we've begun and had a couple of sessions on, continuous that. You know, I know, I've got a bunch of stuff to go through, I don't know, Paul, if you had something you wanted to say first, or just...
Take your word. I appreciate everybody's willingness to continue on this journey together.
Absolutely. You guys are diehards, I tell you, you have the convention this weekend, and you have your jobs, and here you are back again, serving your community and kids in your community, so my goose to you for all the energy you are expending on behalf of the boys and girls. Proud of you. So, just a little, if I may, commentary on the committee thing. Anybody that shows up that's not a committee member of the board gets to sit back there like these guys. You don't sit at the table. Okay. Just clarifying that, that helps distinguish...
Yes.
The role that one is playing as an elected member or appointed member of the board yet attending the committee.
Right. Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, just help with the distinction, just for...
I think it would help to start us off, so thank you.
Yeah, so, so you two at the table. Alright. I don't let them talk, you end up coming up to the table. You're not on the committee. So this is really hard to see in this slide, and I apologize, so, for the agenda for tonight, and we played with the lights, and I don't have, you know, you know me, I don't give you a copy of my slides, so, for the agenda for tonight is the board self-evaluation report that you all just took, and it's in front of you, have some discussion about that, some discussion around your board superintendent agreement that you were adopting when I was here last time, September 30th, talking about that. Communication outside of meetings, like, you know, how do you communicate with each other, how do you communicate with other people because you're a member of the board when you're not sitting here? Role of board officers, I put in quotation marks transparency, really what does that mean to you, considering that there is public meeting law that has created all the transparency that a state of Oregon thought was necessary? So we need to have a clarification of that for this board and what your expectations are. Purpose of your board meetings, meeting procedures, this, that conversation about parliamentary procedure you guys talked about, have some suggestions for you with that. Being a united board, and I put in, down at the bottom, if we have time, perfect superintendent. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on that, but I wanna plant the seed, because you're gonna be talking about your qualifications and whatever, the Q and Q.
Right.
Yeah. Qualities and qualifications, you're gonna be talking about that, so I just kinda wanna plant some, you know, thoughts. We have an hour and forty-five minutes-ish, so it's a super ambitious agenda to try and get through all of that, and so we'll just see how far we get. You know, I like a pretty relaxed situation, where you just ask questions in real time, and we just keep the learning going, so I'm not super formal about that. So I thought that we would start out again, I always like to start out, just by bringing this all back to your work, your role, what are we talking about? Tonight, we're talking about board performance and effectiveness, and in using this tool, it's gonna be an unusual training that Renee shows up to, that this tool isn't a part of it. So this is just like, to help guide you and keep you always thinking about, what is your role in whatever thing you are talking about? So you can do this with your negotiations, you could do this with your long-range planning that you just like talked about, you can use this tool for really just about anything that the board's considering. So the first thing to think about over here in setting clear expectations in board performance effectiveness might be, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, so I was just speculating, that an expectation, your greatest hopes for the district in this area would be that your boarding impact, or the impact of the board's performance on the district, defining what you want that to be. What do you want your impact on the district to be? And to think about that, and having that in your mind to then look at that board self-evaluation report, kind of through that lens, are we doing that? Are we having the kind of impact on the district that we want to have? And what is this report telling us? So in order, whatever you identify as what you want your impact to be, this next session, learn together as a board team, you're probably gonna want, need to do a self-evaluation, you have a policy on that, it's policy BK, that says that you will do it, and you also have a policy on board professional development, that's your BHB. So, once you've identified what you want your impact on the district to be, how are you gonna know if you're having that impact and evaluation? And then you might need to have some professional development in any arena, depending on what that evaluation shows, in comparison to your desired outcomes. So, just to show you, these are your policies, again, it's just really hard to see in here, but it says that you will, a yearly self-ac appraisal may, so didn't say will, may be good... I can't read that, conducted at a regular or special board meeting. It's much clearer on my screen, I should go there. And then board member development, it says that you place a high priority, I can contest that you do, this is my third time after this year, and maybe coming back again on December 2nd. So, I agree that your behavior matches this policy, that you've placed a high priority, and I saw several of you this weekend at the OSBA annual convention. So, so then, after thinking about these two areas, what do you want? How are you gonna know? Creating those conditions for success, and in all the years I've been coming out here and working with this board, and I know that the majority of you who's already knew you've been around for a while, of my coming back here for over five years, we haven't even talked about collaborative governance here. And so did any of you get to, watched the webinar last Tuesday, or get to any of the conferences, or the workshops on collaborative governance? What was your take on that, Jennifer?
I listened to the webinar. I thought it was, it was good, it seemed to just draw generally from sort of the basic, the information that is already out there, in other words, it was maybe putting it together in a new way, or somehow trying to capture a way to be conceptualized differently. I was looking for something, ooh, like, what's the new thing? And I don't necessarily think that there is a new thing, I think it's just understanding what we do as collaborative, making sure you're pulling the right pieces from just basically good board practice anyway.
Anybody else have any insights on what you heard over the last week or week end? So she's right, it's not new, but I haven't ever really talked about it or helped this board in any conversations around it, but what is new is that we actually gave it a definition, so the definition is new, and then we tried to identify these elements that all comprise together, help with collaborative governance. And it's really, what's important to us is focusing on these partnerships, like, tonight, you're meeting with the city, that's a perfect example of this. So you're bringing in those partnerships that together, you're gonna learn, and together, you're gonna lead, to whomever these partners, partnerships are, and that you're going to do it in an environment of trust and respect. Collectively, the partners are gonna share a focus on student learning, and you're gonna take a collective responsibility, collective accountability, and collective support. So when we're talking about partnerships, we're talking about those people who the school district works with to improve student learning outcomes, so administrators, so teachers, so maybe boys and girls clubs, you know, YMCA, I don't know, like, in your community, what partners that you have? And that you create a process whereby we can all get together in the same room, or maybe different partners at different times, as is appropriate for the subject matter that you're gonna talk about, and identify what are those student learning areas that you really wanna concentrate on, how are each of the different partners in playing their own role going to allow that to happen? So we like to think of this kind of like a baseball team, but it's a baseball team that's in the outfield, and you're gonna always and forever be in the outfield, this is, kind of brings down in that, but, ugh, it's horrible, you can't really see it, but a first baseman and an outfielder have completely different jobs, they have different roles to play, yet they're still contributing to the success of the team. And so when we talk about these partners, it's recognizing that they have different roles, different contributions to make, but collectively, we're sharing the responsibility for the success of the teams, for the success of the kids. And the two roles of a special importance in collaborative governance, as we believe it at OSBA, is that of the role of the catcher and the pitcher, because neither one can really exist and do their job well without the other. If the catcher's down here and no one's throwing a ball to him or her, there's just, it's futile, right? And if the pitcher's throwing, but there's nobody to catch the ones that don't get hit by the bat, well then we've got a lot of wasted time, and that's this relationship, the superintendent and the school board, because you have to have each other, your roles are very different, yet you have to work together in your collaborative process, and so it begins there, and then you pull in all of the other people. I like to think about first base as being elementary school, so all your partners in the elementary school, not, you wouldn't bring all of them to the table, but all of your partners in the elementary school, second base as middle school, third base as high school, and you wanna get every kid across home base, which is graduation, that's why you're always in the outfield. And the infield, I like to think of, is like the district office, and the outfield is all of the support services that support the school system. And so of those, who are those key individuals with a desire to share that responsibility with you for student learning, with that desire to work collaboratively with you? And then let's see how we can structure some time together, three or four meetings a year with the board and a team of professionals that you were working with all the time inside the system to move student achievement forward? Who are those folks that you were working with three or four times a year, let's bring them together with the school board, let's have some conversations, let's talk about what the school board's role is, and let's talk about what their role is, and how can we support one another, how can we share responsibility together, and how can we be accountable together? Because, you know, for a lot of years, teachers felt thrown under the bus by our political environment in the United States, with, you know, child left behind and other such measures, that measures, you know, teachers in the classroom, and they have felt pretty alone and pretty thrown under the bus. And none of us in this room feel that way, that we do that to teachers, but I think just in the United States, we're just gonna have this blaming teachers mentality, and so if we can't bring people together and share the responsibility, accountability, and support, we're not gonna make as much movement as we think we will if we share that. So, so anyway, I wanna point that out, that collaborative governance might be something that you, the Silver Falls Board, might wanna consider as you move forward, as one of the ways that you as a board create your conditions for success, that it can allow you to have the kind of impact on the school system that I believe you wanna have. Because I believe this board really wants to have a positive impact on learning of boys and girls in this school system, or seeing some nods. So, I thought so. I felt like I knew you well enough to make that move. So then, if we continue to look at this whole thing from your role of the board, then you have to ask yourself, board, how will you know if your performance is having a positive impact? And then, how will you interact with your community in respect to your board work? And how, so helping your community to understand that your work as either the pitcher or the catcher is completely different than Paul's work and the rest of the team that's in the outfield? And how the community understand that distinction for the role that you play? We think one way to help you do that is through this board self-evaluation tool. It measures the board in five standards or roles, they very much like the roles you just saw, the one that's different is we have learn together as a board team over here, and this has governance as a standard in a, as a role, but the rest of these four are the same. Inside of these four standards, when we get in there, you're gonna see that there's twenty-two benchmarks, we're not gonna have time tonight, and you get everything else done in our agenda to get through all of those, so I'm just gonna highlight a few of them for you, and then I want you to just take this home, read through it, mark it up, write down your observations as you go through it, we can certainly talk about it in more depth, but I want you, wanted you to have it. So the first page that I want you to look at is just right inside, you just open it up, just this very first page. And when you look at this, first off, what are your observations? What do you see as a strength for you? Areas of growth, why? What questions, adjust this page first, come to mind for you, I'll give you a minute, and then I'll let you talk to me. So just this first page, what are you seeing as a, just obscene, what are you observing? Like, what stands out to you?
Well, first I notice is some consistency, actually, there are not dramatic differences between any of them, there can, there are, not dramatic.
But I can say that there is inconsistency within categories, with regard to how, I mean, there are relatively few of us, right? So, you know, a third of us think it's great, and a third of us think it's kind of meh, right? Depending upon what the, so that stands out to me, that there's a difference in perception among board members as to how well we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's pretty split down the middle, on some of them.
Well, that's what I mean, I mean, they're consistent, they're across the board, they're similarly great.
Right, right, yeah.
The, oh, thirty-four percent.
I remember that.
Yeah, all, but these, these are summation of, in standard one, this is, how many questions were built into this?
So it comes back to, there's the, it's all of these teamwork, healthy relationships, policy-driven students, roles responsibilities, deserves, diverse perspectives, and ethical conduct, those are the benchmark. Inside every benchmark, there's like two to six questions.
Yes, right. So I was doing math, I'm like...
There's sixty-nine, there's sixty-nine, what we call key performance indicators, and all sixty-nine are captured in here, and, and for each one of you who took this survey, they're all captured in here. And so we can dig in a little bit further, but do you see, like, areas of strength, growth, anything more, or, what are you seeing?
Well, the biggest growth are clearly the blacks and reds, I mean, if we're saying that we don't do things that we ought to be doing, never, or we don't know if we're doing them, I guess that's a problem too. Clearly, I mean, the sum of the time probably are also growth opportunities, I'm guessing most of the times in all ways is are saying we think we do a good job, I mean, so...
There's some room for room, that's, that's a genuine, I see, right?
And when I look at this, just, you know, a glance, the fact that you have the highest always inside a standard two, as a glance, I would say that that's probably like your strongest, one of the standards, that where you are as a board is in, in making clear what your expectations are for the system. And so inside of there then, since I believe standard two vision is a good one, I want you to go to page ten, so flip over to page ten. And I wanna point out here, particularly in question twenty-two at the top of the page, you see there's two colors there, and that five of you believe that through your policies and actions, you express your belief that all students can learn all the time, and three of them believe that you do that most of the time. How do you do that? How are you as a board doing that? How are you expressing your belief that all students can learn? Share with me, I can share it with other boards. I mean, it's a good score, I'm, I'm saying it's a good score, it's a strength.
I think that question probably breaks, how an individual, I mean, these are taken individually, and I would guess, I don't remember which one I even answered at this point, but the other, obviously, the, you know, it's going to gauge our belief that that's what we are doing every time we do anything, we're doing it with the belief that all students can learn. I would just say that as I answer that question, and I look around this table, it's, how do we do it? It's because nobody's not doing, right? There, it's to the exclusion of actions that would be contrary to this, as opposed to being able to, you know, itemize a list of things that we're doing, right?
That's what every, especially when we get the building reports from building administrators, that's what their whole report is, this is what we're doing, and they got data, they're showing these are the kids that are struggling, and this is what we're doing to bring them up, they're, they're, they're on, you know, and then, you know, that's improving test scores, you know, to, to back up their, the, you know, they have their actions, they have, but their data, the data backs up the actions, and it's, to do it.
So I'm curious then about the next question, twenty-three, policies and actions communicate high expectations for all students. Through policies and actions communicate high expectations for all students, so to what extent does your board do that? Somebody thinks you never do that. I just think that that was an interesting response. If the person can remember who might have answered it that way, can you share kind of what your thinking was in that the board is not doing that so that we can maybe learn from this?
I think that might have been it. I don't remember.
Yeah, I didn't, you know, it's easy to not remember.
Yeah. But I mean, part of the consistent with what I felt is that there tends to be sort of a satisfaction with, we're doing great, we're doing fine. That sort of, which isn't all bad, right? And it's okay to celebrate, it's okay, because we all do it very well. So that's good. I just tend to have sort of this predisposition to pushing ourselves to do better because the kids, I think they rise to the level of your expectations. And I think to your first point, all students can learn, and I'd like to see us, you know, push that a little bit more, that expectation. And then obviously, underpaying the resources and all of those good things, not just setting it on some target of it.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that. And so that comes into play all throughout this evaluation is each of you's individual interpretations on these things. And so it leads to the conversations of what is our shared understanding in any of these 69 key performance indicators? And then as you have time to talk through those, then the next year when you take this evaluation, this instrument automatically keeps every year. So it'll have 2019, and then it'll have 2020 right below it. And when you see that there isn't a never over here anymore, it'll be because you clarified that, and you have found a way for this particular one to communicate your high expectations for all students. So I just wanted to point that out to you because this supports why you had such a high, thank you, Debbie, why you had such a high vision score when we were looking at that. Next page to look at here is page 19. Flip that one over. I just want to go through some of these, like I said, and then later you can dig into it with more depth on your own. This one is your structure, which has lots of green, lots of always answers, some most of the time answers, a few, some of the time answers, but no never's and no, no, I don't knows. So when I look at this one, this benchmark is adopting and monitoring an annual budget that allocates resources based on the district's vision, goals, and priorities for student learning. And I'd say you guys are pretty strong in that. You do, based on looking at this, you do a pretty good job of that in providing that structure. But when I looked at your structure, you do, you did have some low areas inside of that, which is page 14. So we're going to go backwards just to kind of contrast. So you're really good at budget, but you weren't quite so confident in providing for the safety and security of all students and staff in the sense of understanding what was happening with your facilities and understanding which policies that you may or may not have in place. Because there was a fair amount of, I don't know, some of the time, most of the time, there's a... What we look at here is what we call congruence. And when the answers are all over the board, what that tells us is that the individual board members aren't really sure. They don't really know what the board is doing in this arena. And some of this might be, I might attribute this to being a relatively young and new board, and you've got, I happen to know, you guys got a lot on your plate this year. And so these conversations probably haven't come up, you know, to talk about what your policies are around school safety and what is in place in your facilities. And is that, am I kind of interpreting that well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I've been on board longer, and we did a lot, a lot of security stuff, a lot of facility stuff before, you know, and now we're doing things, so yeah.
Yeah, and so you're probably one of these always. Yeah, we're doing a great job. Yeah, and the I don't knows are probably the newer board members.
Yeah, yeah.
You're thinking some of them, Lori?
I do, yeah. After visiting some of the schools, and my concerns go through the whole schools, I do worry about compliance issues for all students and for those who need extra focus that way. And so, and I witnessed it, so there was some concern there. It would be nice to hear from the facilities, but what I see now, I do have concerns.
Yeah, and so then that's when, at some point in time, we use the processes you have in place to request add a future agenda, that the topic of school safety, pull those policies out, have people come that know your facilities and share all this work that Tom is familiar with, but the rest of you are not, that what the school system is doing to address safety issues.
I, just really quick, I think I was one of them that said most of the time, because I see that, I see the definition of this particular benchmark as in some schools, but not others. And so, you know, when we finished, you know, the high school, you know, it satisfied, I'm like, yep, we've got it, we've got it down, right? When I go to other schools who haven't had the upgrades or and such, you know, that really concerns me. So I think mine was most of the time. And so I'm, you know, I'm not 100%, I'm not zero, I'm just kind of in that, so.
And a good update to the board will help you know, you know, what policies you do have in place, what practices are in place, you know, what is it. And when you have like a chance, a breather, you know, in your very busy schedule this year, to have that be an agenda item, you'll pull appropriate people together, and you'll have a conversation. Kind of that collaborative governance in action where you're sharing the responsibility for the learning of kids through creating a safe environment, so they're not worried when they're in school. And if they're not worried, then they're more free to learn. So where I want to take you next is back to the beginning, and kind of, you can't see it really very well, but I have a briefly, hugely arrow here to standard one. Standard one was a little bit of a concern for me, just, it wasn't bad. But when we look at the always, it was the smallest amount of the always was in standard one. Most of the time is there, and the, some of the time is there. And you know, so it's like, it wasn't what I would think of as probably your lowest standard, but it certainly wasn't just stellar, in my opinion. And so inside of there, one of the ones to look at is on page seven. To drill down into it just a little bit. And here again, you have some incongruence. And so I just was, want to give you a chance to look at that. Adopting policies based on well-researched practices and emphasize a belief that all students can achieve at high levels, and that support continuous improvement of student achievement. Was your concern maybe about your policies? Governing with policies, your focus on policy decisions? The collaboration, you got a most of the time and a never on 14? What do you, what do you see as the?
I'm going to guess it's the well-researched part. And again, I'm new, so I'm not speaking from having been on board for several years. But what I guess is that there isn't necessarily emphasis on really seeking out the newest, the latest, the best practices, what are high-achieving districts doing, how can we help them, even if they're across the country, which would speak to, you know, Q14 being high. Well, I would think that not necessarily the policy so much as the self-education and other things though.
Okay, then shall I agree with that?
I look at this, and I don't, I don't see as much of congruence. I mean, it looks like a standard deviation to me, more or less.
Probably.
It's, it's, you know, most of these are, I mean, there's not that much difference between a most of the time and some of the time. Depends on your move, I mean, I don't know, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Some of these, some of these are, are things that if you said, well, we do it some of the time because we don't every meeting talk about these things. So some of the time, we do this, and some of the time, it isn't pertinent, it isn't relevant, right? So I don't, maybe I don't see it quite as alarming when I look at the data, but.
Fair enough, that's a good perspective, good take on it. It really kind of comes down to an interpretation of the terms in the survey. Okay, don't want to belabor too much. We'll just look at one more here when we kind of talk about the congruence. So page 20. And in that one, there is a lot of variation in your answers on page 20. Committing to continuous improvement in student achievement at each school and throughout the district. And there is just a whole rainbow of colors, particularly on 55, which has all five colors there. So you go from three people saying always on 51, and two people saying never on 51. And so.
I'm curious, so I'm looking around the table. You know, finally review of the strategic plan, we just got done doing that. We completed it. I would say that it was discussed multiple meetings, and we adopted it. The only delay was really the hiccup in June, right? There was sort of an obvious reason why things were perhaps delayed a bit. I'm curious who might have said we never do that, because we just did it. So I'm curious, right? Why would we try that?
If I may, I took this question to be a review of the strategic plan. It's adopted.
That's what I was determined to.
I could see how somebody could say never, because we just adopted it, and we haven't reviewed it yet.
That's a fair point.
I kind of thought maybe that might be somebody, how somebody responded.
Yeah, it could be.
It was just in the works for a year. You know, we had a large committee working on it, we're putting in hundreds of hours. And so I remember how I answered this, but my thought process on it would be maybe starting, now that we have a fresh, new one, we can implement these particular, you know, accountability benchmarks for this particular topic. And we, as a board, know and remember that we did this, and that we're doing that, and it's on the calendar, and we're doing it. So that's what I'm looking forward to.
And I hear you. So I don't think there's any disagreement there.
Right, right. So I think maybe, yeah.
So we'll do that next week.
Fantastic, because the accountability overall score for you guys was kind of low, but not the lowest. But you know, standard four, the accountability piece, and the lack of a plan, the beginning part, meant you didn't have a monitoring plan established. And so you have plenty of opportunity to really, really grow there.
So hopefully these won't be so ringing by the end of the year, or the next time we do this. I would like to see more green, you know, as we.
No, I don't remember there being a timeline associated with, in terms of, reflect over the past year, or reflect over... So I was really just looking historically, to the extent that I knew, and I understood. And to your point, it's been very different in the past six months, at least in my mind. And so I think we'll look forward now to seeing us great ourselves a little bit.
Right, sounds great. Let's not belabor this anymore then, as far as evaluation, unless there's some more from you that you want to talk about.
I have some question. Do we have built-in, in addition to Debbie and Jonathan, and Paul question, do we have regular inroads built into our boards? Say, around strategic plan right now? What do we just have on the first?
We have, we have three, oh, no, probably nobody does. I have three planned, November 25th, and then I think February and May are when we're doing three updates, right? So.
I didn't know the dates, but we talked about that, that we're going to.
Yeah, I remember talking about that there were going to be multiple, and I didn't know the specific date either, but it was there. It was in the conversation, so that's good.
Yeah, I think I probably was a low load on this, just because I didn't know that. And part of my response is too, I thought, well, I know the superintendent is attending to these things, but that's different than the board attending to them, I think. And so that's, I don't know, at least my thought process. Yeah, yeah. My turn. Fair enough, sounds good.
One thing I want to talk to you, before we leave this, this is just discussion of work. How would you guys like to follow up, right? So we had a few highlights tonight. It seems like there are some things where some good conversation might be necessary. Or maybe you guys are thinking, you know what? It's a new year, we've got new board members, let's see what... I don't know, do you want to drill in more on a future work session? Or would you prefer to just see how things are going and rate ourselves next year, and see how we mature shit, right?
You know, what's, what's, what's an evaluation worth if you don't do, if you don't do follow-up?
Well, that's one of the questions.
And so that's, and so I'm along your thought process. Is I would like to see this come up, you know, maybe twice again in the year before we have the end of the year, maybe in, I don't know, February and then May or something. And we're all kind of aware after reading this, and we just, you know, we make our marks, and we kind of have our information. But following up on this is the only way that we're going to have really good communication, clear transparency among us, and understand each other's point of view when it comes to some of these topics. And that's a healthy relationship, so.
And we normally come with some suggested goals and some suggested professional development, but I didn't take the time to do that tonight because we had such a long agenda, so. So very good, I'm glad that you brought that up, and I'm glad that you guys subcurbed. So we normally would come in with more of, you know, some suggestions from our part.
What I'll do is, it's going to go onto our list for work sessions. There's a lot to juggle, as she was alluding to. But I think, I prefer it, you know, within the next month or two, we follow up. So that would kind of be my take. See where that goes, and then there can be follow-up after that as necessary.
Yeah. Yeah, after you all mark it up and have your questions and get clarifications. I was with a board at the time, and somebody said, who put never there? You know, and it was like, it was like really upset, you know? And the board chair owned it and said, well, it was me, and this is why. And ended up having a really good conversation because they had some clarification around the understanding of that. So I think after you have some time to digest it, come back, revisit it, highlight where you think, well, you know, we have a lot of I don't knows in here, let's maybe get some knowledge. Mr. Superintendent, help us learn, you know, and pull it all together.
And I know that we have a long list of things that we would like to discuss in training, but I would rather have an in-depth conversation about one topic and really get some insight and conversation from all of us than to quickly say, okay, yeah, we're done with this, and let's move on so we can get it covered. That's, in my book, the management care, that's not how we learn. We learn by, yeah, digging in the weeds, I suppose. And if it takes us a couple of years to get through everything, then it will. But it will be more solid foundation moving forward than just, you know, putting a hot cheer, putting a hot cheer.
But if it's weeds of board work, it's fine. You know, it's a board work. You know, you don't want to give the weeds of his work, but let's get into the weeds of board work, let's talk about that. And then that's what this is really helpful for because there's 22 benchmarks that we believe in board work. And then the, well, at least the other people who created this believe that these are the kinds of things you do to accomplish these benchmarks. So yeah, let's talk about that. That's all about you. That's what I'm bringing.
So I think what I'm hearing is we're good with a future work session going into detail, but moving on tonight, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Is that December facilitated work with Monday?
I could come out.
We still have to finalize that.
We have to decide if we're going to use a timeout later.
It could be.
Yeah. Okay, very good. So, thank you, I knew you needed some time to just digest it, and I just wanted to point out some highlights. So you have an agreement with your superintendent. The first part of it is about collaborative governance. Did you guys, in adopting this, create any kind of check-in schedule with each other on how each party is doing this? So I have, I had adopted what I call a... So, I have, um, I had adopted what I, I call the three Cs. So, when you're using an agreement like this, that you could do it in intervals, if your superintendent evaluation has check-ins, you can just add this as an element of the check-ins, or you can do this, um, in standalone meetings, but maybe at, at minimum quarterly with having an agreement. You have a, a time to check in and see how each of you, the two parties, are doing in your agreements. And you can either celebrate, look at us, we're doing a great job, we're meeting our agreements, we're meeting, um, our expectations. We can calibrate and say, "Well, this is lame." We thought that this was like an important element to have in there, but let's, we just kind of tweak this a little bit. You know, this just isn't quite working like we thought it would be. Or the third C is we can correct. Um, so if there's a, a party to the agreement that's not meeting the expectations, we talk to that party. And if, if it happens to be the superintendent, that conversation can be held in executive session, and it protects his personnel rights. If you're not, as a board, holding up your end of the agreement, that has to be a public, because you're publicly accountable to the people who have elected you and placed you on this board. So, you know, you don't get the same behind those doors conversation protection, if correction is ever anything in there.
Point, point of order then, so if it comes up in executive session discussing superintendent's performance, what's the proper course of action if it then relates to a board member?
Yeah, so, then Paul would need to, to not have that conversation in executive session, and you have to come back out into public and say, "So, element such and such in this agreement, I don't feel like that, you know, the board is upholding, you know, the expectations." Remember when we talked about it, and I said, "However many number of expectations you place on Paul, he gets to have an equal number of expectations on you." And, um, and it's you collectively, but it could be an individual board member that has tripped up. And sometimes a correction is just like, "Hey, Renee, remember? We're not doing that." And then it's, you know, "Oh, oh, yep, you're right, I forgot." You know, it's as simple as that. Rarely does it come to something as extreme as a censure, but if it does, that's in a public meeting. And a censure is usually only used if an individual board member's behavior is persistently placing the district at risk, at some kind of a risk, and the rest of the board draws a line in the sand and says, "We recognize Renee's behavior, and that she is divulging executive session material, you know, and that we need to keep that confidential, and we have talked to her, and so on and so forth. We're drawing a line in the sand, and we're censoring Renee on that behavior." I mean, so that's usually whenever that is used, is if it's a board member is just really exposing the district to some kind of a, a legal liability, generally. So, um, so I reckon, I, I think about, I, I don't think I talked about this, but when you do this with your, um, agreement, and if you have, at some point, the board-to-board agreement, like this, how the seven of you are going to interact with one another, the three Cs are also appropriate, and to try and work into your calendar, through your calendar, for work sessions of, you know, when are you going to have these conversations? How are we doing? It's only, it's so bad, it's so hard for you to see this. But, you know, looking at number three, for example, "Board member shall give careful consideration, listening to all perspectives, to all issues brought to the board by individuals of district leadership, that you're, you know, if you're finding that somebody is rude, they're not, you know, listening respectfully, you know, they're blowing off at anything anybody would have to say to me." Come on, come on. You can think about it.
And so, complete, so question, the parliamentary procedure that we, well, that I actually looked at the video twice, um, it's, it, you know, it, the, the information that they suggest, um, is, well, I mean, you know, there's times where I could, you know, I guess, "Well, hold on," you know, whatever, and do it the proper way. Um, you know, so, if someone else on the board is, is doing something that's out of parliamentary procedure way, um, can any one of us on the board go ahead and say, "Now, hold on a minute," or...
You say point of order.
Point of order.
You say point of order.
Yeah.
And then it's up to the chair to rule on the point of order.
Okay, good. Okay.
Yeah. And then if the chair's not sure, he could put it to a whole, a vote, a vote.
Oh, okay, okay.
And he has that option, to put it as a vote to the whole body.
Okay.
To make a determination on something.
Great. Okay. Great. Okay, thank you.
One thing to follow up on, I think parliamentary procedures, obviously, are a scary area for us.
I have some information to share with you.
Personally. Um, one, I ran into Kate Passton, the post at ODE at the convention, and one of the things that she suggested that the state board does, apparently, is that they have the board secretary, I don't know what this is for, I don't want to, it's just maybe. Uh, the board secretary, um, kind of writes in parliamentary procedure cues at certain points in the agenda, so it's really clear as to what the chair and the vice chair do with those moments. And I knew that you were kind of following that, your answer to parliaments a little bit. So if that is something that you're interested in, um, I think I, you know, would be welcome.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I don't want to put more, I don't want to make that a lot.
Debbie, I'm talking about something so important on the agenda, so probably get some kind of procedural, procedure on those. Just, I, I...
Recommended motions are helpful, too.
Right.
That's exactly right.
Agreed.
Yeah. And I have, I have parliamentary procedures, I'm further into this, but go ahead, Dor.
Yeah, I, I know that one time you and I spoke on this topic, too, and, and some of them that I've observed, they've had, well, the parliamentary, um, someone who just keeps them flowing in the right way.
Yeah.
And it's, it's nice to have that, just so you know where the curve is, I guess, before you go up on the sidewalk, but, yeah. So, um, something like that, I think would be very appreciated, whether you're a new board or a seasoned board, sometimes the conversation becomes intense, and there's many variables.
And in some districts, you know, like if they have a Future Farmers of America program, those kids know the stuff left, right, sideways, so they, that might be, if that, you know, maybe assign some extra credit or something, you know, kids will come and help you out. In other districts, sometimes it's the, you know, the board secretary, because they've been around for a while, and they just know these things, and you give that individual the permission to interject, and bring them back into, um, order, you know? But the responsibility lies with all of you to kind of know what you're supposed to do, and then your presiding officer, a lot falls on the presiding officer, because that's the whole idea of anxiety, is to, "Let's, let's get this working, let's move it on down the road, and let's make sure it happens." So I have a couple of documents that I'm going to leave with you tonight. Um, one on the, the role of the presiding officer, or the chair, and, um, another one on, um, around robin process to make sure that everybody has a chance to be heard. Um, it's a, it's just a process that you can engage, consider using, so that it's very efficient, and everybody has a chance to be heard, and nobody dominates conversation. And because when Roberts rules a board, one of the foundational rules is, nobody speaks a second time until everybody else has had a chance to speak at least once, or be given the opportunity to speak in decline if they want to. So we'll get there in a little bit. Um, in your communication agreements, so you have three of them there, um, that says that you're going to follow the chain of command and communicate directly with the superintendent. So that means you're not communicating directly with a principal, you're not communicating directly with a teacher, uh, you are communicating directly with the superintendent when you have some kind of question about something, um, or you hear something going on in the community, you go directly to the superintendent on that one. Number two, again, you communicate directly to the superintendent or the board chair to address questions or concerns about agenda items. So you see on the agenda tonight that we're appointing a couple of committee members, you could reach out to one or the other of them and say, you know, "Hey, I'm interested," just throwing it out there. But you could do it again here, but, you know, just, you know, one or the other of you. Um, and then that third one, if you have some kind of problem with somebody, you're going to go have a one-on-one conversation, and not backdoor around and, you know, talk to other people about your angst with somebody. At least, that's how I interpret number three. Uh, if a board member and/or the superintendent have individual concerns, either she shall communicate one-on-one with any other member of that team to whom, you know, there's some discomfort. Any different understanding on any of these communication agreements? No? No? I noticed, too, we didn't talk about this when we were talking about your agreement, but I looked up this policy, too, that talks about communications outside of board meetings. So, this is your policy, VD slash BDA, and, um, so it's saying that your communications to, by among and form of board members outside of a called meeting in their capacity as board members, shall not be used for the purpose of discussing district business, and that includes also any electronic communications. And that, when you do have electronic communications, they're limited and cannot include deliberation, debate, decision-making, or gathering of information on which to deliberate. So it's really pretty restrictive by your policy, how you can use email, according to your policy. You have permission, for you, this is your policy, your emails may contain, "Hey, let's talk about our board self-evaluation in an upcoming meeting." "Hey, let's talk about, um, the safety and security of our schools, maybe even particularly our rural schools, because we feel really good about the high school." Yeah, but you just, a suggestion for a, an, an agenda item suggestion. Reminders about meetings, date, time, places. "Hey, remember, we're meeting on the eighteenth, but it's not at the district office, it's at the high school, we're meeting with the city council at seven," so on and so forth. Board meeting agenda items or information concerning agenda items. Um, this one, I went and had to talk to our director of policy services, Kate Goldstead, about, because it kind of confused me a little bit. I'm like, "What really do you mean by that?" And kind of what she, how she interpreted that for me, "But this is your policy, so it needs to make sense to you what this means." Um, but it's like, so we have, um, we have a, an agenda, and it's been sent out, and you all have it, but now there needs to be like a little change, or an addition, or here's some additional information, you know, since the agenda was sent out. And so you can use an electronic, um, item for that. And if you, as board, individual board members, which she explained it to me, because this was something that I heard, we like to study information, you know, prior to board meetings, and you might find this like really great report in your individual study, that you can then send that information, because here we have an agenda item on school safety, and look, I just found this report about school safety, and so I want to send that information concerning that agenda item.
Doesn't that conflict with what it says above, about including information on which to deliberate?
Yes, so you need to send it to, um, Debbie, or to Paul.
Okay.
Um, but you can send it, according to your policy, you can send information concerning agenda items via email. You can send that information, but who do you send it to is not in here.
Yeah, and we can, I mean, it's within our purview to modify this policy, should we see that it's a secret.
It definitely is.
Yeah. And, and then one-way information from board members or the superintendent to each board member, like an article or something like that, um, but it also has to be made available to the public. Because, e, when you have email, none of the rest of us know it even exists if we're not hard into it, or somebody doesn't forward it to us. So, um, so you have to make anything that you are sending also available to the public, okay? Particularly if it's concerning an agenda item, like, "Hey, I found this report," well, then she just needs to staple that report in with the meeting minutes, you know, how you keep stuff. Um, and then, if there's, however you have chosen what your process is of how you're going to respond to various emails that come to you as a board, you need to have agreement on how you're going to do that, but you are saying, "We can use email to communicate back to our public who emailed us." That's this, that's E down here. Um, and then private or social meetings, you know, you can get together, you can have them, you can have a Christmas party, and everybody can come, or you can have a birthday party and invite everybody over, whatever the case may be. And you can socialize all you want, you just have to not talk about what you would talk about in board meetings. Pretty simple.
One more question. So about you said, you could email the superintendent or the chair?
That was in your, that was in your agreements. So, so here you, you're going to, any questions that you have about the district, any, any questions about anything district-wide, operational-wide, any of that kind of stuff, goes to the superintendent, doesn't go anywhere else. It doesn't go to building principals, doesn't go to teachers, doesn't go to other board members. You, you just send it to, to Paul.
Okay.
Um, this one, your superintendent or board chair, per your agreement.
Was that, we, you know, we took that out of the CAM list, right? Is that an implied and/or? I mean, that does seem oddly restrictive, that it would be one or the other, but not both.
Um, let's talk about some reasons why, I'm going to, I'm going to show you an example in a second. And then this one, um, this is an and/or here, because it kind of depends on, um, the topic. Um, you know, who you're, who you're going to, um, because it's the individual concern. So, where, where are you going with that? And I just pointed all of this out to you, because I did get copied, I did get sent an email that was sent by one of the board members recently, to all of you, you've all seen this email, this is not a surprise email to any of you. And it has an and, and then it has, "To all the other board members, do not reply." So, right there, we never had any place in any of those agreements that we were sending information necessarily to all board members, and saying, "Well, just don't reply makes it okay." Because of what's in the body of the message, maybe didn't make it quite so okay. Um, because of this agreement, that you'll communicate directly with the superintendent or the board chair prior meetings to address questions and/or concerns about agenda items. Because in the body of this particular email, were some questions about, "How is the board going to do some things? How are we going to communicate with one another? How are we going to ensure our transparency? How are we going to have communications about, um, information that maybe you know a little bit ahead of time before everybody else? How, how are we going to have enough time to look at all of our information?" Which is really a discussion you guys should have. You definitely should have the discussion that was in the content of the email, but that should have, according to your agreements, gone to either Paul or Jonathan to say, "Hey, let's put this on the agenda, we need to talk about these things, we need to talk about how, how are we going to have these conversations?"
So, it would be up to Paul or Jonathan to put that on the agenda to have a discussion about that?
See, I...
If the rest of us don't know, I mean, is that the case?
Right. And so, so, yes, and that's, I know that that's a challenge for you, and it seems really, really super efficient to communicate with all of you all at once in this way, but because there was rationale included in the email, I believe that we should do this because, that's leading into deliberating towards a decision. It didn't seem like it at the time, but because, it wasn't just, "I just want to talk about our communication protocols," period. It was, "I want to talk about our communication protocols because." And the "because" needs to be the conversation that all of you have with each other out in the open. Lori?
We read the email, though, I think the "because" was supporting why the email was being sent to the agreement, adding support that way.
I agree.
So, it becomes revocated, if you will, with the, um, what can we do, or what can we say? Because otherwise, if we're trusting that something that's very important to us...
Right.
If we're only saying to one person, then I'm, I'm a little lost at this point.
So, you have a policy that says for you how you are going to place items on an agenda, or how you're going to request items to be placed on an agenda. And this is something really hard for you to see, but the DDC, and the part that's I highlighted there, it says that "Items of business may be suggested by any board member by so notifying the superintendent at least five days prior to a meeting." Now, I am finding that a lot of districts, five days isn't enough time, and that, so you might want to consider that for future policies. And that, so you might want to consider that for future policy conversations, that you need a little bit more time to pull things together for a meeting than five days before it's scheduled to start. And then-
Well, it is a suggestion, right? It doesn't imply that it would be on the agenda.
Correct, that's the other piece. Just asking doesn't guarantee that an item gets placed on an agenda. There's two, at minimum, two qualifications of whether something gets placed on an agenda. Is it really board work? You know, because some things we get asked to talk about, you know, people out in the community want us to talk about at board meetings, isn't really board work. And the second thing to consider is, is it germane? Is it timely? If it is board work, if it is, is this the right time to talk about it, or is there another time to talk about it? Just because we thought about it in November, doesn't mean it should be on the December agenda. It might be, you know, it just depends on what the it is. So, one of the questions I wanted to ask all of you is, if we are notifying the superintendent that we want something on the agenda, do we, do you want that rationale included? Because I believe such and such and such and such. Do you want that sent, you know, in your request so that he has some kind of a sense of urgency for each one of you individually as to why you would like this item placed on your agenda? You know what I'm saying?
And are we looping our chair into that motion?
No, no, this, this policy right here says that you are sending it to your superintendent. And then you have another policy that says that the superintendent and the board chair are going to get together and they're going to decide about agenda items. You also have the ability at a board meeting, as a board member, to say, Mr. Chair, I would like to place our communication protocols as a board member on a future agenda. Just kind of like you did tonight about this, this-
Is that an motion?
No, you're just requesting, you're just requesting it. And then he'll take note of that, and then whoever is a chair in the future, take note of that. And then you look at your calendar for all of the rest of the work that you have coming up to do as a board.
So, the request isn't necessarily meaning it's going to be on the agenda?
Correct. Correct. There's no guarantees that something is going on an agenda just because a individual asks.
In some cases with emails too, I found most of them informative. Sometimes I find myself agreeing with them, but in some cases, these emails happen after the fact. And so, to, to say, well, we need to be, I guess, open and share this with the chair prior, sometimes we don't know that until after the vote. And so, it's like, can we discuss more clarity on something? You know, I was in the meeting and I didn't feel like I had adequate time to review, blah, 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 blah. How can we do that smarter and-
Yeah, so any, yeah, so, I mean, you can have like logistic conversations with Paul, you can call Paul up and, you know, have a logistic conversation with him about, you know, whatever, like you just mentioned. And, and he can like help troubleshoot that with you, brainstorm some solutions for, for you, you know, around that, because that's going to be situational to each item. In theory, an agenda that's well put together has a packet of information that is delivered to you. In theory, in time enough to read it, digest it, ask your pre-questions of Paul, anything that's, you know, in there so that he can be sure he comes prepared to the meeting with your answer. Because it's incredibly frustrating to come to a meeting and say, oh, I'll have to look into that and get back to you. Wouldn't it be nicer if you gave him a heads up and then at the meeting you ask it again for your sake of transparency, like you did tonight? Shelley, that was very good. You know, so it goes into the record, and then he has the answer. You know, you're not having to wait for another meeting to get the answer. You know, so, if you're finding that you don't have enough time from when you get the packet, and then your meeting is scheduled for, then that comes down to, we need to talk about that because you do probably have a policy on when your packets are going to be delivered to you. And that's why you might need more than five days, because if you need more time of material, then they're going to need more time to prepare it. Laurie?
Yes, I think one of the things that I'm finding challenging to balance is that I do respect, you know, you don't want to surprise somebody, and so you want to have that information in advance, but the element of surprise does not work both ways. I mean, we not only respect that and offer that to the superintendent, but I believe the board members should be respected in that way as well. And there are times when I have felt the tension and I felt like, well, I know you want this of me, but as a board member, I wish there was a little bit more time to process this, or, you know, been informed in a healthy amount of time.
And so, you guys have to have a conversation of what does a healthy amount of time mean? And what kind of processing is necessary for you? Because I know that, like, you guys are very concerned about transparency.
Correct.
And school boards are, yes, they're representative of the community, yes. At the same time, they're kind of like the Supreme Court in that you don't lobby individual jurists on the Supreme Court, you go lobby the court. And so, individuals who want the school board to consider something need to have a way of getting that message to the board, like a person would take a case to the court, you know, whatever their, their desire or their wishes for the school system are. But we're so used to and ingrained on representational government that we think, well, I can just call up Kurt Trader, he's my member of Congress, I'll just call up Kurt Trader, and he's just going to represent my concerns to Congress. Well, yeah, he will, because the only thing he does is a representative. So, it's a little bit different for a school board, you know, when you're, it's balanced, it's nuanced. Not everybody can communicate directly to all of you, and you are going to carry some people's wishes in that. And obviously, all of your, you know, recording of meetings is giving what you as a board thinks, see, believe, how you vote, you know, back out to everybody else. So, the timing thing, you're going to have to figure that out and communicate that.
Does that need to be clearly defined in policy?
Perhaps, because-
Because I think there are some policies that we either need to carefully look at, potentially, and/or honestly admit to ourselves, we don't have policy on that, so how can we see something?
So, this policy BD/DC, which is that the superintendent and the board chair are going to prepare an agenda for your regular meetings, they're going to get together for your leisure business meetings, and they're going to say, yep, we want these items, and they're going to prepare it. Then a packet of supporting materials, this is still in same policy, will going to be distributed to the board members at least two full working days prior to the meeting. So, if that's not working for you, this is a policy decision, and this is a policy conversation that has to take place in public. It has ramifications on time to pull things together and give things to you. So, yes, yeah. And so, that kind of a little bit, kind of was why with that email example, I was saying there's some rationale in there, because it impacts kind of policy decisions. And, and we didn't like really know that they were impacting policy decisions.
And I, and I have to say, in reference to the email, it was, it was good, you know?
It was a good email, yes.
It was very sterling in its approach and direction.
Absolutely.
And I think we do, not only think, but I believe that we have to look into this a little deeper and offering enough time for the board members to review everything thoroughly, and so we can make the best decisions for the students and districts.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention one thing about the email. You know, I read it, I, I tried to read what was up there that you had. But I remember the email. And I think it was more of a logistical question, you know, in, in what we're talking about right now, just asking, you know, could we have more information, or the information so we're not opening up a packet at our table and going, oh, I have to make a decision on this calendar right now because I didn't have time to review it at home? You know, and, and figure out the dates and all that, and, you know, there's been multiple examples over the years I've been on the board where I'm like, I don't feel comfortable making a decision on this because I got it right here, right now.
Yeah.
And I wish I would have had that. Could that have been given to me last Wednesday? And I don't know, you know, because sometimes I think that it could have been, sometimes I don't. And I really haven't ever asked a question, but I feel like with us moving forward and doing a superintendent board agreement together, and knowing the language on that, I feel like in the spirit of that teamwork, that having an agenda in front of me and then having documents under it that I haven't seen yet, I just don't feel comfortable making decisions. And a perfect point was the last work session. When OS, when Sarah was here and OSBA came, and she was giving us a calendar, she goes, okay, does anything stand out? And I'm like, I have no idea on all of these dates because I didn't-
I didn't see the order.
Yeah, I mean, it's on my phone, it's at home, and I, I can't tell you anything. So, I'm just sitting and looking.
Yeah.
You know, and I think many other people probably have on their phones, but I didn't as a board member. So, there's multiple times where it would be really nice if things were submitted, if they could be, to be able to get it, go, oh, okay, let me look at this at home, let me make my thoughts, and bring it in, and I'm prepared for an intelligent conversation to happen, and make a decision.
Yeah.
And so, I think that, so I think in the spirit of, of that, I, when I read that email again, that was the spirit of it. Oh, yeah, we're, we're, it might have gone off of the policy and, you know, but I think it was-
Right.
Yeah.
But the reason that I brought it up, and, and the author notes this, the reason why I brought it up, in part, is that going out for superintendent search, and whatever you end up doing is, you're going to be vetted, you. The seven of you are going to be very vetted by any serious candidate. Is this a board that I want to work with?
Yeah.
And I know-
Agreed.
-that you guys all have good hearts, you want to do things right, well, you, you know, and I want to do my best to make sure that you are all operating within public meeting law. And, and the copying of all board members made it a little, even though it was like no reply, made it a little bit like, hmm, because of the rationale. If it had just, I mean, even, I mean, it was outside your agreements of sending it to the superintendent by policy, or sending it to the board chair of the superintendent by your agreement, it was outside of that to do that. But also, it was the because language that went to all of the board members because the, that is the deliberation towards a decision. You're going to be deciding on your communication protocols at some point in time, and that, according to public meeting law, needs to happen in a session like this.
So, the emphasis that you're, you're laying out is that when that issue comes up, and it will be the first of many, the, the proper approach is to alert, I would say Paul and Laurie, but in, or the chair currently, but, you know, somebody needs to know about your desire, somebody's desire for agenda item.
Absolutely.
That's what you're saying, is the proper course of action. And then, to work it in as we're able, to, as a discussion topic. I, I think that's helpful. I mean, so that's sort of one issue. The other types of emails that tend to go up to all have to do with, I'm ignoring the ones that were in the example. I'll throw in an example that just was going on this last week. It was a contract, it needed to be signed and sent out. That contract was one that I wouldn't have minded having another eye. It's like, I sent it out to, it said, review, if you have concerns, let me only be known. Is that inbound, or am I already outbound on that?
Well, because I happen to know what the contract was, and know that the board already voted to approve the working with this organization, then you were already granted authority to, to, to sign it. So, so that existed, but to have another set of eyes look at it, I think that was probably fine. But I'm not a lawyer, and so, I think, but I think that it was probably fine because, you know, hey, Shelley wants your opinion, give me your opinion on what you see in the contract. But if there were elements that needed to be renegotiated in the contract, you know, that, you know, from feedback, then I think that at that point you would need to bring it back to a, a board meeting, and then say, hey, this is a contract that's before us, is this going to work for us as a board? You know, do we need to change?
My, my understanding was that I would have the authorities' chair to do some of that on my own. However, like I said, I was soliciting just, you know, am I missing anything you guys might want to take a look? The other thing that I did was to give an update, that I have sent the contract, it's signed, I've sent, those are all fine, right? Those are inbound and signed. Okay. Just, I'm just trying to-
That's just one value information, you know, contract signed, sent, you know, and moving forward.
And what you have been doing is a great effort to combat the letting us know as much information as a board as we can. So, when we come here, we are knowledgeable. And it's not a surprise, because there's a lot of surprises. You know, there's certain board members that might know certain things, which I understand that. But it's, it is so much more, it is a lot healthier, it is more proactive in building relationships when you can share information without going off, you know, your- But it really is, and I think that's in the spirit of what we're trying to really do and consciously really do here.
Well, and public meeting law says that you all need to be operating from the same information. So, that, hence the packets for, for meetings. That's the intent of public meeting law.
Right.
So, the one-off emails- It would seem like in contradiction to be able to make sure everyone has the same information.
To a certain degree.
To a certain, so, the, the fact that a few board members know something a little bit before the rest is not a violation of public meeting law, is not a violation of your transparency, it's a timing issue based on their jobs. For example, board members on different committees aren't going to know things other board members aren't going to know-
Right.
-until it gets shared in the avenue of however you choose to share that information. So, agenda preparations and items placed on agendas and different things like that are obviously going to be known to Jonathan and maybe Jennifer too before, but when you come to the meetings, all of you should have the same information, and you should have gotten it at least two full working days prior to the meeting. Now, stuff that comes from outside entities might be a little harder for Demi and Paul to nail down for you, like the example you gave about the days from Sarah.
Yeah.
So, they have a little less control, but you could maybe put a little pressure and say, hey, our board's meeting, we've got this policy, I'm supposed to get this out to them, what can you get to me so that they're not coming to a meeting and just finding things out?
Right.
So, but that's public meeting law. You're all supposed to operate from the same information, and, you know, and then you deliberate that information in a meeting like this, have your conversations, ask your questions, you know, and the only thing about asking ahead of time isn't hiding any questions, it's just, hey, we want to be sure we get the answer when we show up, so Paul, I'm going to let you know I got a question about this. And then he can bring it to you. The email things become problematic because they're not exposed to everybody. These people sitting here and the people watching, this can't see what was in your email. And that's the challenge with that.
Yes, I was wondering, just evidently this email was forwarded to you. Was the author being informed? Were they-
Not till this weekend.
Okay.
So.
And so, is-
But it was, it was only forwarded as an opportunity to teach so that, so that you, you know, there was nothing punitive or anything like that. It was just an opportunity to teach and learn from your agreements, your policy, your practices, so that you can be the best highly functioning board possible and be attractive to the superintendent.
I was just kind of curious if that was something that should have been handled internally as opposed to here in the work section, but I'm not, I mean, I am new, but it just seemed to me like-
Well, to put it in perspective, all emails that we send to each other for board visits are public.
Well, I know that. I'm just talking about, I understand that point, but I'm just wondering about this particular email. It was cc.com. It was cc onto you, and as long as the author was aware, I mean.
Not at the time, not at the time. It was just sent with, it was an opportunity for us to learn, and it was, and so.
Yeah, I feel a little uneasy about that. Thank you, thank you.
Try to not have surprises.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that, I think that not having surprises is a big deal. And I, when I learned about this, I was like, well, why didn't whoever sent it just call Janet? I mean, why didn't they just call her and say, here's, here's an opportunity I wanted to share with you, da-da-da-da, I'd like to send it on to Renee and such. That's professional courtesy. That is professional, and I have no idea who forwarded it on to you, but it, and that's, that's another thing that we're talking about is, is the professional courtesy to say, hey, Jonathan, you know, you know, I'm going to send this email forward, how do you feel about that? You know, and I know I've sent emails like that to people.
So you have this right here in your communication agreement, and we have our three Cs.
Yeah.
So, you know, if there's an individual concern, he or she shall communicate one-on-one with any members of the board superintendent team as appropriate.
That's a.
So, yeah, so you have that there as a way to, to move forward in this particular situation if so.
Sarah did.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you're good.
So you have that there.
While you're looking, one action I think I'm hearing come out of this is that we do need to make sure that the review of the superintendent board working agreement is also probably on that next agenda. Because that's, as I was listening to you, that can't be done as our discussion, in executive session with performance evaluation. So that's.
The expectations?
The.
The agreement?
How we're doing, sort of our self-evaluation of our own agreement.
Right, right, no. Your, your part of it as you look at as board, yeah, that's, that's in public. So these things where you have expectations of the superintendent, they can definitely be discussed in executive session because that's what you expect of your superintendent.
Right.
The superintendent's expectations of the board that you agreed and you signed off on, then that happens in public.
So my point was, I think we need two items, one to cover both halves of this on the agenda. That's what my.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
That's a good decision, good clarity, yeah.
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 Okay. So, good conversation. We have about 20 minutes remaining before your meeting to go in with the city. I was hoping that maybe we could kind of talk a little bit, a little bit about your meetings and then maybe move into some of that parliamentary procedure information that I brought for tonight. So, according to your policy, according to organ law, you know, it means having a forum of you to get together to make decisions or like you're doing tonight to deliberate towards future decisions on any matter. If you're deliberating about, hey, we need to talk about this at another meeting, so on and so forth, or gathering information, like, hey, we have these new self-evaluation results, there's some information we've gathered that, you know, is going to be for a future meeting. So, so you have that. You also have, according to law and according to your policy, you have three kinds of meetings, or really two, regular and special, and then emergency. An emergency is just a special meeting that can't wait 24 hours. That's really the only difference there. So you have those kinds of meetings. Yes, you can vote in special meetings, yes, you can vote in emergency meetings. You, you're not restricted from them because you are having these meetings to, you know, to make a decision, deliberate towards a decision, or gather information for future decisions. So you have those. As an individual board member, you have some rights and even some authority and responsibility. I just kind of wanted to point this out again to as policy BBAA because so much of what we say is the board, the board, the board, the board. You know, you're a singular entity, Paul has one boss, not seven bosses, you know, but there is, you know, you are individuals that are making up this board. And so to what extent does your authority extend as an individual? And I just want to point this out to you as well because this plays out in meetings and some of this plays out outside of meetings if you've been given authority to do something, like to go negotiate a contract on behalf of the board or to please reach out to legal counsel or, you know, something like that. So I just kind of wanted to, to point that out to you. And then this one, I think is one that you're going to want to pay particular information to because it says, members will inform themselves. You like to do this research, right? With information requested through board action, like, hey, can we get some information on the safety of our schools, right? Okay? Information supplied by the superintendent and information gained by participating in this, board professional development activities. So if you're getting information outside of those kinds of areas, maybe you want to have some kind of conversation about how do we share that then? Because if as an individual, I'm getting information outside of these means, how am I sharing that information with my fellow board members and still avoiding the open meeting? My suggestion would be to send it to Paul to disseminate.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be my suggestion, that if you, in your researching a matter, you know, that's on a meeting, talk about no surprises. So if we got two business meetings, right, I mean, two business until you change your policy, if you change your policy, but right now you have those two working days to get information, and so you're doing your individual research or whatever, and you find something and you do send it to Paul and/or Debbie, whatever you agree upon, and then that gets sent to all the rest of the board members. There might not be time enough for you to have time yourself to read that and research it, so you might come to a meeting, Shelley, like I talked about, and now here's a new report that you never saw before, but it didn't come from this.
Right.
So it's information that was gained in another way. So you need to kind of be thinking about information that you are using to make your decisions and where you want to get that information, as you've expressed here, where you want to get it. Yes, Sarah?
I have a question because sometimes people send me articles that aren't necessarily about any business that's going to be happening. And so I remember one time I just mentioned it at a meeting, an individual sent this to me, did anybody else get it? And they said, no. And I said, well, I can forward it to you, but it doesn't have any things to do with anything that we're deciding on.
And that's totally fair, that's one-way information. Anybody that was paying attention to your meeting, wanted a copy of it, that they contacted Public Records, request and say, you know, that information that Jennifer sent out, I'd like a copy. And you go, okay, here you go.
So it's important that the public have needs of having access to that, and so that's why I think it needs to be, that is something like that, or forward to Paul and Paul sends it out and then, you know, as part of the meeting materials or something. It depends on what it, what it is.
The public meeting law's intent is that the information that you are using to make decisions is also available to everybody else. And so when you're sending stuff via email, they don't know anything is being sent because they're not part of the email. And so if you send it to the district and then it gets disseminated, it becomes a part of the packet then, even if you've got padded links, it just becomes a part of the packet, and then it's there.
Right. And she often asks you, one, even afterward at the meeting, if there was information that wasn't really available prior, she'll update it to make sure it was out and comes to you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So, good job. You're making lots of good progress. In your meeting procedures, you might not have known that you actually have some language around parliamentary procedure, maybe some of you did. It's BDD. And so it says official board business well be transacted by motion, so I move that, or by resolution, whereas, 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 therefore, at a duly called special board meetings. Except as otherwise provided by state law and/or board policy, the rules of parliamentary procedure comprised in Roberts Rules of Order newly revised procedures for small boards as modified by you, the board, will govern the board and its deliberations. So you do have, you do have.
What is it, what is it using by unmodified, like your copy of how we modify it? Is that somewhere, like how do we know how?
Right, 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 right. No, you don't as a brand-new board member, other than how you see how the board behaves and how it makes its motions or does its resolutions, how it does its, conducts its deliberations and any of that. And you can, by, as a board, you can vote on this. I knew that we adopted very strict Roberts Rules of Order, you know, kind of thing, you know, however you would like to want to word that. We adopted one time on my board that nobody could speak unless they got the permission of the chair. And so no flirting out in meetings, anything. And when we give you attention and then with the chair's permission, a member of the board could speak. And so that was something that we adopted. Now, if you adopt something like that, it stands until it's changed by another board vote. And so all of you that are relatively new have no idea what might have been voted on by another board, maybe a previous before new board secretary, you know, obviously before Paul the superintendent. So I caution you if you vote on something, but really more have an improvement amongst yourselves. And then whenever a new member is on the board, say, this is what we, this is, we've agreed to behave this way. So for example, one of the ways that you might want to choose to behave in your meeting is through this round robin approach. I just love this Jurassic Parliament. She's just amazing. But basically the round robin is that you as the chair, Jonathan, because this year you, you know, we have a motion on the table, and you just make sure that everybody has a chance to speak to it and you keep it very orderly, you don't let them keep interrupting and arguing with somebody and shut that up. You know, I get to state my opinion, my because, and then I have to sit down and listen to the other six becauses before I can say anything again.
I think one of the things that I've observed is that we tend to use motions as a way to end a discussion as opposed to a way to begin discussion, and it's sometimes used as a way to just cut it, cut it off, like in other words, okay, this has gone too long, make a motion and be done with it, as opposed to, you know, have a motion, have a second, have discussion, and then having a formal way of drawing that discussion in to a close.
Right.
Where everyone's had that chance to.
And that's where it comes into that previous slide that talked about as modified by the board. Because in Roberts, technically you don't have anything to talk about till you know what it is you're debating. I knew that we adopt a uniform policy and all kids come to school wearing khaki pants and blue blazers, and now we know what we're talking about. But in school boards, it tends to be different because we have this whole agenda, this laid it all out for us, and we know what all the business is going to be, and we've read all the material, and we've gotten a presentation from the principal, and we have all of this information, and out of that it just kind of naturally lends itself to conversation about the uniform policy and conversation with the principal who's presented this information to us, and we have all of this dialogue, and we kind of get a sense of where everybody is, and then someone moves, I knew that we adopt a uniform policy, you know, blah, blah, second, any further discussion is usually what happens, and then it's a yeghernay. So that's a modification for somebody that asked, you know, what, whatever makes the most sense to you is what you need to do.
This is a really good topic, though, I want to make sure we tie it. The, my understanding, and I'm basing this on the history I have witnessed and have observed in years past also, is we tend to break things up into two categories, right? We have a discussion item at the beginning where we will have the discussion, we'll hear a lot of the becauses, we'll hear a lot of the why. Later, we have action items. The idea of later is that public input is squeezed between, so that if there is an opportunity, there is an opportunity for typically, we do something more, for public input prior to, you know, when it comes to the point of the action item. We tend to move in second pretty quickly, but there is, I still always say, is there any further discussion? However, that will sometimes get cut off if it seems like it's not changing or different than what we already assume. So I think that's, that's one distinction, and I don't know that that's, I don't know how it affects parliamentary, I don't think it really does affect parliamentary procedure per se, other than as Renick is stating, we sort of have already had a lot of conversation often before we ever hit the motion.
I have a question. Sometimes I notice that too, when we're in the process of discussion and then we move into a motion, and sometimes the motion moves it quickly to sort of slow things down. Is there, is there, does the board decide how much awkward silence? They can have, before the motion, if that makes sense, before the motion, is it, I'd like to make a motion. And the reason why I say that, sometimes the wheels start turning, but the mouth isn't moving, you know, and so I miss the spirit.
Yeah, so it really is kind of your meeting, and you do get to run it in whatever fashion makes the most sense for you to get your work done efficiently. And so that's why I suggested the round robin. In Roberts rules, the chair is there to ensure that all the business gets done and everybody gets heard and has an opportunity to contribute to the decision-making process. And so you can, you can have then a conversation about how do we want to proceed in our, in our meeting, of what, how formal do we want to be? You know, I was working with one board where they call everybody by Mr. or Mrs., you know, keep it very formal, we adopted that process, nobody can speak unless we have the permission of the chair. So you just need to just kind of figure out what's going to work for you, and, you know, when it comes to motions. There is a thing though, that the chair can just rule and say something is so if the rest of you don't disagree with that. A perfect example is adjournment. You don't have to have a motion to adjourn because here, he can make a statement, here no dissent, the meeting is adjourned, pauses for a moment, if there's no dissent, the meeting is adjourned. You all agree. But if somebody disagrees to anything the chair says, then, then you're supposed to speak up. No, 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 we can't adjourn yet, Mr. Chair, we have one more piece of business, we need to discuss the Christmas party. Now, it wasn't on the agenda, so where do you, where's this coming from? And then, you know, so on and so forth.
Well, as chair, you just have to make a decision and, you know.
But technically, the meeting belongs to the whole board.
So you can make a motion to.
To add.
To discuss it.
Yeah.
And the chair to vote to express it in the second.
That's true.
And the same thing with ending discussion. No one board member, even the chair, gets to just say, it's, we're done discussing something, the board has to vote. So when I was on my board, I had a board member that all the time would just say, question! And then the chair would immediately go into a vote. I'm like, I wouldn't have been, and I didn't know that I could have said, hey, wait a minute, we need to vote, and if the rest of the board wants to stop, then we'll stop. But, you know, she, she wants to stop, I still want to keep discussing, why does she get to trump my decision? Why shouldn't the board vote on this? Because I was ignorant and I didn't know.
Well, I can have a vote and.
You have to have a vote and a discussion.
Unless no way is there. Is that true even after a motion?
So you have a motion of the uniform policy, you're debating the heck out of this thing. Good, it's bad, it's different, everybody's stating their opinions, you know, it's just all kinds of stuff about this. And so somebody is getting really frustrated, could be any member, could be you, any member, and they say, I called a question, or I moved the previous question. So at that point, as a chair, you would say, there's a motion to end debate. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say no. And if you get two-thirds ayes, then you immediately vote on the uniform policy. If you don't get two-thirds ayes, the motion fails, and then you can keep discussing.
I think that's the layer that Dana was alluding to, calling question can come first before a motion.
Calling a question can come first before a motion is made.
No, calling the question. Oh, you mean to end debate on all of, before you even have a motion?
Yeah.
Well, you, I don't know that you technically can because you, you would have, she would at that point have to make a motion on the uniform policy.
Right, that's the complexity that you pointed to with having those two sort of processes separated.
Yeah.
Separated, although to a certain extent it does, it kind of makes it easier because generally, when we get to the action items, we've all had a thought. A chance to talk, to process, and then it does go very, very. It's been some, sometimes where I feel like we sort of abruptly ended discussion and we didn't feel like everyone was on the same page, but it just seemed to be that the motion was being used in that way and that's why I was trying to clarify.
Sorry, I guess.
It's just sort of, no, no, it's alright, that it just sort of flipped the order of operations around that. And I just wanted to make sure that we, as you said, we can't really discuss something in order to take action on it unless we know what we're discussing in the meeting.
So that's my question, is calling a question.
Basically means to end up discussion.
And, and seeking agreement or disagreement in that case.
Yeah, just taking a vote, yeah.
Excuse me, I hit the road.
Yeah. We're gonna wrap up in like four minutes now.
It's probably best practice if there is public courtesy. We can follow these rules to the script and the script, but I think in order to have public relationships too, there is courtesy and I think that Jonathan has done a great job in having that courtesy and public votes before. There, there is this courtesy of, you know, we want to hear from you, is that he has physically shown that, is anybody have discussion and such. And so I appreciate that and, you know, making sure that everybody has a chance to speak. Because that's what we're there for. You know, we're there as a, as a group together on this board to have discussion about possibly action items. And if it's cut off, you know, with the motionators and such, that, that's not, you know, best practice, I suppose. I've been using that word quite a bit.
People elected you, they elected you specifically because they believe that you were going, the people who voted for you believe that you were going to move the district where they wanted it to vote. That's why they voted for you, because they believed that you were gonna represent their wishes or concerns. So when you were at the table, you have a moral obligation to express the various points of view around any decision, to influence your fellow board members to vote a certain way. That's, that's, you know, that's your responsibility and you can't influence if you don't talk. Now, you have to have a respectful and equitable way to talk, which, you know, Tom's been pretty quiet tonight, which is fine, he spoke up a couple times, he's been pretty quiet, but in your meetings, you have to be sharing, you can hold Tom, you know? Talk, you know, what are you, you know, what's your opinion on this?
It's letting you guys learn.
No, 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 I know, I know, I'm just saying, it's just, I'm just using it as a visual aid or, you know, when you're discussing the uniform policy.
We get home.
You know, well, what, you know, give you, give your opinion later.
They're spinning.
And so sometimes you, you get all of this information from your professional educators as to why they want you to have any particular policy or adopting program or a budget or a calendar or whatever they're, the professional educators are bringing for you, when you're talking about that and whatnot. But technically, until you have a motion on the table, you, you know, well, technically it's on the floor, but until you have a motion on the floor, you don't really know what you're voting on, not really. And so then, once you know what you're really voting on, as a chair then, typically the person who made the motion gets to speak to it first to give their rationale. Well, I believe these should be our communication protocols because, and this is why I believe they should be our communication protocols. So then you could ask, you could do one of these, a round robin, to hear from everybody, or you can say, is there any, is there anybody who sees something that we haven't heard yet? Is there a different opinion? Is there more information to consider, but something the board hasn't heard yet? So if you've talked this uniform policy to death already in your informational stage and now we have this motion to adopt it, as a chair, you could say, okay, person who made the, you know, motion, why are you making this motion? And now is there anything that you want to add? And if there's not, then you can vote right then and if there is, then give people the add, an opportunity to add. So you can have your discussion before, then give your clarification of your motion and move quickly to a vote, as you've discussed. Or you can not have any discussion, get your motion and then make sure all of the becauses and all of the moral imperatives and, you know, representing your constituents' concerns or whatnot are represented and then you vote. And then once you vote, you know, it comes off of the floor and it's, it's a done deal and you just get to vote.
So can you use that for me that speaks my, this, the idea of in debate for deliberation, that if the information is already on the table, that you don't need to actually, you do not, you not need to keep some of that, I just do. So even, even if it's expressing, like, one of the things that Kurt you say before is that that is our obligation to express our opinion. So who else has said it and you just say, "I agree with so-and-so" and then just don't add anything more?
So the intention, the purpose of the debate, that's what I did, the purpose of the debate is to try to sway the vote the way you want it to. And so if you were this, like, vehemently opposed to uniforms, don't just be quiet and not say nothing and then vote no. Try to sway the rest of your board to also vote no because of your superior intellect and intelligence and understanding and research that you've done, you've got really good reasons why we shouldn't have a uniform policy, then you need to speak up. But if everybody is pretty much in agreement and you know, because your discussion before, that we like all like this uniform, like this uniform right here, then once we finally have the motion on the table, then we need to vote.
So I need to say, I agree with Tom for his, 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 his.
You can do that, you don't even have to say anything at all. If, if your point of view has already been placed out on the table, you don't have to say anything at all. And in her meetings, her minutes, she just says, "The board discussed uniforms and implications on students in the school," because the board discussed it. She doesn't have to say, "Jennifer agreed with Tom," and Tom said this and Jennifer agreed with it. She just says, "The board discussed these things."
That's why we record them.
Yeah.
If they put it into that level, it'd be fail.
Right.
Welcome to lunch.
You know, so you can say it if you want to, you have to say it, you don't even have to. If, if the influence towards a vote is already out there that you agree with, okay. So, I gotta get you out of here.
I think you, I really appreciate it.
My pleasure, yeah, my pleasure, absolutely.
I could say, "Barring any of the stuff."
This meeting is moved!
Do you need to mature? You need to.
We just.
Yeah.